I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting in order on May 13th. Please rise for fudge.
I fudge will use this to apply of the United States of America into the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call Kelly.
Better bit?
Here.
Mr. Case Leo?
Here.
Miss Glenn?
Here.
Mr. Rakevsky?
Here.
Stadler?
In.
Mr. Sein?
Okay.
Mr. Wolf?
Delaney.
Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Fire exits man?
Exit sir in the back of the LGI.
Alright, tonight we have two workshops and the first workshop is an introduction of the valedictorian and salutatorian. Going to turn it over to Ms. Soto.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Our Superintendent is Zack Calandow. I am so proud and so thrilled to announce our salutatorian and our valedictorian for the class of 2019. Our salutatorian, I'll start with her, her name is Marissa Morges. She unfortunately could not be with us this evening, sorry, but I would love to share her accomplishments with all of you. So she will be attending John Hopkins University in Baltimore, Maryland, where she plans to pursue a major either in biology or biochemistry. She hasn't decided. She has been a valedict member of the concert band. She plays the saxophone beautifully. She's on the track program, math team, National Honor Society. Marissa works part-time at Cold Springs Farmers Market and is also a member of the Airphone Community Band and competes in Howland Library's high school Battle of the Books. Marissa is both a National Honor and National History Scholar. And in addition to her incredibly rigorous school program here, she enrolled in a college program at DCC. She took chemistry class and she passed with flying colors. So Marissa is an absolutely phenomenal student and she looks forward to continuing her educational, excuse me, journey as a John Hopkins community band. Marissa Morges. And I would love for our valedictorian to join us and her name is Natalie Corales. Come on down, Natalie. Natalie is going to be attending Saskatoon University in Southern Grove, Pennsylvania. She plays the flute and was accepted into the college music program, double major in music, but she hasn't decided what she's going to study for a second degree and that's okay because you have plenty of time to do that. She participated in the math club, the yearbook club, jazz band, is also a valedict member of the concert band and an outside of the school community band throughout her time in high school. She is unsure of her long-term plan, her long-term goals and that's okay, you have all the time in the world to figure that out, but currently her aspirations in life is to find a field where she can truly enjoy gaining meaningful experiences through opportunities and travel, so she really is dear to my heart, right? She looks forward to continuing her educational journey as a Saskatoon River Hawk.
Let's do a picture. Picture. Board, let's do it. Parents too. And the good part about being valedictorian is you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can get up and leave at any point, it's totally fine, because based on the, all that we learned about you, you probably have some more important things to do than listen to me talk about the budget. But thank you very much for coming, we really, really appreciate it. Alright, our next workshop is the Public Hearing on Budget.
Okay, so we, we kind of have very similar information than what we discussed in a couple prior board meetings, but we wanted to for the hearing review, review the key aspects of the budget, so we're just going to quickly go through it. First I need to say, very excited about this budget going forward, along with tonight, I had a meeting, I've had a few public meetings, one at the Beacon Tappernacle Church, one at the Beacon Rec. That one was exciting, we, we didn't have the, we were locked out, then we went to the system director's house, got the key, we set the alarm off.
Everybody does that.
Super exciting, but a good amount of people came and I've also been with all the PTAs and I've, we've done a lot of student focus groups this year and one of the questions, we didn't talk about budget, but one of the questions we talked about was the budget. So I've met with students in grades fifth all the way through 12th and we've, one of the things we've asked is, how should we spend our money? What should we spend our money on? And what's been great about that is the first couple of groups I met with were kind of, didn't know that question was coming and I think word got out because after the first couple of groups, everyone was ready with their list, the students I mean. And so we really talked with a lot of folks and also internally we meet with staff quite frequently about needs for the budget. So we feel like what we're putting forward is a reflection of that work and just, this is just a review for the board, but for public tuning in for the first time. Major focus areas of the budget, first one is class size reduction, this is especially focused at the elementary grades. The last two years prior to this one, we've added seven positions to lower class size. This upcoming budget, we're just recommending one at TE that will reduce classes, what our hope and our goal is that classes are 24 and under. Does not mean that we'll automatically keep adding if we do have one above that, but we have, this year, half of our classes are, at the elementary level are below 20, the other half are between 20 and 24. We had one outlier, a fifth grade class at 25. I've said this now a bunch of times, well, for the board and to these different public meetings, I put those numbers up against any district in the area, something that the board has really sought out over the last few years and really accomplished that goal. And I know elementary parents really greatly appreciate it. We've had a lot of elementary parents come to our meetings so far and that's one of the things they've talked about, so I wanted to pass that feedback along to the board. Additional coursework at Beacon High School, we've gone very in-depth in that in previous meetings, so I will not, you know, rehash all of that, but essentially we are looking at expanding our computer science offerings, our world language offerings, business education offerings through adding a teacher, a full-time business teacher, adding, increasing art offerings by adding a half-time art teacher, especially looking at architectural design and interior design, and also just some additional classes that don't involve an additional teacher, like another AP class in English and some more electives. So working with our new principal principal this year, Ms. Soto, we've really talked to students, I said at the last board meeting, but it bears repeating, Noah and Annie have been a really key role, I think, and kind of really inspired us to really seek out more student input. They've done a lot themselves and what we've heard from all the students is really, we need, we want more options, we want things that feel more real to us and certainly we've heard about the need for a second world language, so we're starting Intro to Italian next year. That all being said, we are very excited to be rolling out those different offerings at Beacon High School next year. Additional mental health supports at the secondary level, that is primarily in the addition of a social worker, that would be base at the high school, but also work with middle school students. We, our goal is to be able to hire someone who also is able to do drug and alcohol counseling and prevention work for our secondary students. Increase access to technology tools, we're very excited about this. This past year, Rombaugh Middle School was all one to one, sixth, seventh and eighth grade and this next year, we are moving that to the high school and all of the high school students will have Chromebook within the first couple of weeks of school that they will be able to use when it makes sense in their classes, when the learning activity calls for it, and also use outside of school. And Anthony, I totally forgot to answer your email question, but concern about outside, outside access to wifi, we haven't had a lot of concerns brought to us. The one person who did bring the concern, we actually did a little training with that parent about how to do things offline with Google Docs and that actually helped quite a bit. We've worked with the teachers to not assign, to not assign activities that require wifi that, you know, so anything with the Google Suite, you can do offline and then it's the second you get to the school and you get on the school wifi, it all uploads to Google Classroom. And so I can't, I can't say that we are 100% perfect, but all the teachers do have that message to, to have anything that's required, that the ability to do it offline is there as well. But that's something that we'll keep asking about and keep talking to see, to see what means are there. The other technology tool that we're really excited to unveil at the high school is we'll have interactive whiteboards or teaching screens in all the high school classrooms. Rombaugh had them put in this past summer, so they've had this whole year with them and then this year at the high school. Coming from other high schools where other districts that I've worked in were high school, I saw high school teachers using interactive wipers years ago, it'll be really great to have them, to have them at, at the high school next year. I've really seen high school teachers over the years really use them creatively, so we're really excited to have that. Expanded PD, again, in previous board meetings, we've really gone in-depth with this, but we're focusing PD on a few things. One is developing our culture of care in the district through things like responsive classroom for elementary teachers, restorative practices for secondary teachers and this dignity framework, which focuses on diversity and equity issues in the district and also engaging, excuse me, creating engaging instruction and looking at sustainability curriculum and also just having our same, not same, but having teachers do curriculum writing this summer. Increase opportunities with gardening, farming and the natural world through community partnerships. We are keeping our partnership with Hudson Valley Seed going this upcoming year, we're very excited about that. We are increasing our partnership with Common Ground Farm, they currently work with just a few of our classrooms at the elementary grades and we're looking to expand so students at all levels at the elementary school have some connection, either coming to the school or going out there to learn about that and also doing some work at the, at the middle school. And so another thing, this actually started a couple of years ago, but we're continuing, is fourth graders doing the Clearwater Field Trip, so that's something that started my first year here and we're continuing that. I think in the past it was grant funded a little bit and, and so we've picked up the slack for that, so all fourth graders go on that. Of course we have the fifth grade sharp trip. So maybe related to that little list, but something that the district is taking over, this upcoming year is the funding of the Calico Ball. We're excited to be doing that. Huge thanks to the Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation for all the work they've done over many, many years to fundraise for that activity. I really feel strongly such a valued activity for the district that the district can take over the funding for that and the Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation can focus on fundraising for other areas, so we're excited to have that, excuse me, in this upcoming budget and then supporting our new field, which is part of the Capitol project with bleachers and, and the scoreboard. For some reason I always forget the scoreboard, which is super important. One thing that I forgot to mention in this list is we had a grant for this year for fourth grade and surround the music and the grant was just for a year. It has been a huge success, numbers of fourth graders participating and in surround the music across all four schools really surpassed even our expectations and so we really feel it provide a great foundation for an even stronger surround the music program, so that will continue in this upcoming budget too. So what you'll see is, is just areas that I think really get after the board goals and our strategic planning work. Gets that engaging students, creating authentic learning experiences. We've really heard from high school students, they wanted more and more and more at the high school and we think this begins to answer that. Really gets that professional development, want to give huge credit to the board that's pushed us to expand PD. This year we're looking at a PD budget that's about two and a half times larger than we typically do and so a lot of summer opportunities for teachers, which we're very excited about. And also I think the mental health part is really important and we've talked about that in previous meetings, so I don't need to go into detail, but that's also come from listening to our staff and listening to our students. They, they, they want more access to people who can help them navigate this complicated world of ours. So I already talked about that, the strategic plan greatly helped us with this development of student focus groups and, and then the thing that I did not mention was the, the long haul we do with the board, and I mean that in a good way, where we start back in January about having our department heads and principals come in, talking about their needs and then we kind of put the whole thing together. So I feel great about the process, I think we both got really detailed, but also tied it into the big picture of where we want to go as a district. I talked about these different initiatives here and boy, I just got it all done in that first slide.
Yes, we did.
So again, just down to the degree for staffing, these are like the biggest, the biggest kind of expense items or additional ones is the additional class size reduction teacher. We're targeting Glennon for that, working with all the elementary principals, looking at numbers. We feel that that's the school that needs that additional teacher for next year. Again, it's not on this slide, the continuing the funding of the surround the music for fourth grade, again, it's been a huge success. And then at the secondary level, a business teacher, which would be a new position, a social worker, which would be in addition to the one social worker and one psychologist we have at the high school and a point five art teacher. So that is an increase of positions, but we think they're all allocated to meet board, district and strategic goals and so we're, we're excited with that for it. I need to tell you, with the different outreach efforts I've done, people have really, really resonated with the budget and what we're putting forward and so, you know, these, these meetings are a little top-heavy with parents for sure, but, but I've gotten a lot of really great feedback about, about where we're headed. And what's cool is, some of the meetings, we're talking with elementary parents, but we're, we're talking, we start talking more about the high school and it's fun to start to get them thinking about some years down the road and as an elementary parent, I've been doing the same. So it's exciting to be, to have a budget that's looking at the elementary still, but also really expanding the secondary offerings. So Anne Ree is going to get into the basics of the really fun part, how this all gets paid for and then, and then we open it up to the hearing.
Yes, no questions, thank you. So this slide basically tries to summarize the tax cap calculation for this year and Beacon is lucky enough to be able to increase their levy by 4.4% and that's mainly for our tax-based growth factor, which is the second line. There it's in a percentage, so it's about $600,000. So basically a tax-based growth factor comes about when there's a change in the community, change in the number of households, there's going to be change in assessments, so for now it allows our levy to grow a little bit more than, than others in our area. As part of the hearing, we need to break our budget up into the three portions, the administrative, the instructional and the capital portion. The administrative portion talks about everything to run the building, central office, principal, superintendent's office, business office, all of the administrative functions and the benefits and all of the related expenses that go with it. The instructional would be exactly what you think it would be, it's the teachers, it's all of the support staff and inside the buildings. And the capital portion is the facilities and operations, area budget and also the debt payments, the principal interest. So again, it just breaks it up and makes it look a little bit different, but still the same numbers as we had presented. This slide, that tells you how you pay for the budget and it's something that you've seen before, what revenue sources pay. So obviously the tax cap is at the limit, the levy's at the limit of the cap, so where else do you get number, money from? You get it from the state aid and again, we were lucky enough with the final budget to receive an additional $600,000 when they passed the final budget, so there were things that we had talked about with the board earlier that we would like to have done and we were thankfully able to do all of the initiatives that we had set forth, so we're really happy about that. The tax reduction reserve, this is the last year for that and people who have been kind of following along over the last couple of years, that's the money that we received for the sale of Old Beacon High School, which was a little over a million dollars and we systematically have used it. It needs to be used within 10 years, we maybe have a year left, so this is the final payment for that as well. Miscellaneous revenue includes anything from interest and penalties on taxes when people don't pay on time, to interest income in the bank, to Medicaid reimbursement, which during special ed presentation, we have gained a significant amount in the reimbursement area, so we were able to increase the miscellaneous revenue section. The bus proposition, again, just as a reminder, we are putting forward two 72-passenger buses and four 20-passenger vans. It's a total of 434,693 and that is not what we will raise the taxes for. We, we have done this in the past where we financed it over five years to match our state aid and our transportation reimbursement rate is 59.3, so we match the principal and interest payment against the aid, so it has very, very small impact to the taxpayers. The estimated tax increases, so these numbers look a little bit different than the first time, so they're a little bit higher, our store exemption had come in after we had done the initial presentation. And I actually got an email from an interested taxpayer, so his, and he had a really good question. He wanted to know why on the postcard these numbers were higher and it was representing with 4%, but in the last two years, we haven't raised the taxes that much, we've only raised them 1%, which I thought was, was a great question and I answered him back in email, but I thought it would be important to mention tonight. So these numbers are based on last year's assessments and as you know, the assessments for the last two, at least two years have, have grown between 5 and 6% across the three towns. So when that happens, the levy gets to be spread over more households, so it actually keeps the taxes lower. The problem with doing it now is that the assessments are not finalized until July and August, so I don't have the new numbers until then. So to try to give people more of a worst-case scenario, that's what this, these numbers will be. So they won't be any more than that, but my anticipation, knowing that there are more properties that are going to come on the tax rolls between now and July and August, these numbers will look significantly different. So when the board is asked to vote on the warrant in August, we will do this again to try to see what the real numbers are. But I, I would rather do this and tell people what the worst case would be and then have them have it be less, but there is not a way for me to anticipate the assessments for next year. I also wanted to go over the, taxpayers will see three propositions on the ballot and I thought maybe, I wanted to explain this a little more in case there was a little confusion. So obviously the first is the budget proposition, the second is the bus proposition, which we talked about, which we financed over five years. The third proposition will look different and it's basically asking the taxpayer, if we can use money that we've already levied, that some of it is sitting in the capital fund and some is sitting in the general fund, to use for the capital project. So one might ask why we're doing it this way, we need to actually ask the voters to approve it, we need to increase the capital project amount and then we can get building aid on the higher amount. So that's important for us because our building aid is in the high 60s, so 67, 68% we get back in building aid. I want to make it really clear that, that it will not increase the taxes, it's money that we have already had. The capital money came in flat by two line items in the budget for the two prior school years, so that money's sitting in capital and we were asking for $200,000 from unappropriated fund balance. The capital project came in extremely tight, which we were anticipating. There are some districts that can't even go ahead with their capital project because the numbers came in way too high, so we were lucky enough to stay within budget. The thought process was that as an add-on or a change order, if there was money, we could do the lights, we determined the lights were a very important part of doing the capital project for the field. It will allow much more access to not only the school community, but the, but the community at large, all of the organizations that can use it, so we thought that was an important piece of it. Again, it does not increase the taxes anymore, it's money that's available, but we want to maximize the amount of the project by getting the building aid on the higher amount. So I wanted to make that clear. There is a newsletter that's going to be in your mailboxes hopefully by Wednesday or Thursday and it does explain this a little bit more, as well as all of the other numbers. It talks about the district budget notice, who's running for the board, so all of that information will be in everyone's mailboxes in a couple of days. And I have to mention contingency budget, it's never my favorite subject, but contingency budget, when they change the tax levy law, they change the contingency budget, so you cannot raise the tax levy. Whatever the tax levy is last year must be the tax levy this, this year, if you have a contingency. So that would mean cutting a little over 1.4 million dollars from the budget that we're putting to the taxpayers and obviously that is not what we would like, you know, Dr. Lenz has spoken about all the new and exciting things we have in the budget, we would have to look at that as well. I didn't do the slide on all the things we could cut because I think that people have heard that and know that, but that's a huge number to have to consider. If, if for some reason the budget were to fail on May 21st, the board can decide at that point to put the budget back up again in June or make some small changes before it can go to contingency. So I just want people to be aware of, kind of what the number we're looking for for contingency. And last but not least, budget vote again is May 21st, it's a little bit later than it's been before, just based on the timing of May, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM and Beacon residents vote in Beacon High School and Fishkill and Wapinjor residents vote at Golden Elementary School. So does the board first have any questions on the budget?
Just one additional item, we have a couple more budget strategic plan sessions, we have one Thursday afternoon, 4:30 at Howland Library in one of their meeting rooms and then we are also meeting with the Elks Club, 7 o'clock on that same, on Thursday, just to talk about the budget and answer questions people have.
Yes.
I have a question on the growth factor. So, you know, I understand that because the growth and the more, you know, real estate coming online, it helps to, you know, say we can have a higher increase of levy, how do, and in Beacon, it's obvious, how do they, do they factor in the entire Beacon City School District, you know, I'm thinking for Fishkill and Wapinjors, they may not have as high a growth factor in their particular town, so how does that, how does that work out?
The tax-based growth factor for this, for this purpose, because it's a school district, would cover the municipalities and the three, so it would take into consideration all three of the areas.
So it's not just Beacon, it's really what?
It's Beacon City School District, so it encompasses that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much, I'm super excited, I think it's a great budget, you guys spent a lot of time on this, I, I love the way, the process that you guys outlined and getting the people's feedback, the students' feedback, the staff feedback, all the other little groups' feedbacks, I think it was great, so thank you very much.
Alright, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to read the employment history of a particular individual.
I have a question.
Sure.
If it's a hearing, does that mean that we get to speak at the hearing?
They do.
They can ask questions, yes.
I didn't see anybody jumping at the bit.
Going once, going twice?
I, I would, no.
I was looking around as they looked out there and asked for questions. So any motion?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried 8-0. I would like to request a moment of silence for Ms. Teresa Simone, who retired after 14 years of service, most recently as the superintendent to, as the secretary to the superintendent. Thank you. Reviewing the agenda, we do have two corrections, one is an adjustment, one is to remove an item. We need to remove an item on number 11.03AS on the non-instructional list, um, A5, I'm sorry that is. And the other one is, I would like to make a motion to remove 11.04D on the instructional list and vote on that separately and earlier in the agenda. Comments or questions about removing 11.04 from the consent and voting on it separately and earlier in agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0. Alright, I need a motion for 11.04D, which is an appointment of a PE teacher.
Motion.
Second.
Meredith? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0. Would you like to introduce yourself?
How's everyone doing? My name's Matthew Van Morris, my wife Becky, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you. I'm so excited to, to start next year, I know it's a few months away, but I know it's a few months away, but just, the ball's in motion. I'm just super excited. You won't regret hiring me.
Welcome aboard. Any student or school presentations? Seeing none, we're going to go to parent groups. Seeing none, we're going to go open to the public. No one signed up? There's no one in the audience? We're going to go to the superintendent report.
So I made mention of it at the end of the budget report, but we have two more community meetings, one both on Thursday of this week, four-thirty at Howland Library and seven o'clock at Elks. And just wanted to, again, I keep looking over at no and any. And we just have a couple of meetings left with them. But I just wanted to give an update. We are soliciting applicants to do it for next year. And Elise and I will be interviewing them and making decisions. And then, and then they'll be joining us probably for the last meeting or two of the year. And so we ask students to write an essay. We look at their background and transcript. And we also do like an interview. And these are student advisors to the board. And no and any, you know, had to raise the bar really high the first go-around. And so thank you for that. And we're excited to bring hopefully a couple more on. So thank you.
All right.
And we'll do the official like goodbye Noah and any, I think at the June third meeting. So you have to go to that one. We'll have something more than the cafeteria cookies.
All right, going to committee reports, including board comments. We're going to start with our student reps, no and any.
I want to start off by congratulating Madeline and Marissa. I know both of them, also our high school, and they're great students. So they definitely deserve what honors they get. I want to thank Anthony for coming into our AP Environmental class last week and discussing the EPA and his work with them. I talked to the student chapter and everyone really enjoyed it, you know. To hearing the speakers talk about what you learned in class makes it somewhat more relatable for them. And so they really enjoyed that. We're in the second peak of, second week of AP testing now. And he has Cal tomorrow, they had Bio today. And I think that will wrap up the testing for Beacon. Last week went well, so we're hoping all students do pretty well on those. And I think that's all I have, Anthony. Thank you.
Yeah, I pretty much have the same as Noah. So congratulations to Madeline and Marissa. She's like some of my closest friends. So it's really nice to see them being recognized for the hard work they've been putting in for the last four years of their life. And another thank you to Anthony for coming to our AP Environmental Science class. It's really nice to see, just to hear about what we're learning about and how it's actually applied to practices in the real world. So I just thought that was really cool, listening to what everyone said afterwards, too. I think they would agree with me. AP testing is coming to an end. It's been excruciating past couple of weeks. But yes, congrats to all those who finished and successfully walked out of the examination room.
So have you guys decided where your post-secondary schooling is going to go?
I'm going down to the North Carolina.
I'm going to University of Pennsylvania.
Nice. Very nice. You guys said that so nonchalantly. Down here, going there. Are you guys drumming up business for the next student board reps?
That's going to be fun talking to them. Because, you know, I don't think we knew what to expect. And I'll hopefully share that with them.
Don't be too, trying to bring them in.
Are students asking you questions, like what's it like?
I've got a few, I will say, from current juniors who are in some of my classes yet. There were some here before, but drivers that are interested.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you, guys. All right, going to go, Craig?
While we were talking with the members of the Public Relations, advocacy legislative committee to nail down that date. I haven't done that yet, so I don't want to say.
Okay. Cora?
So I realized that I don't have my notes for our May Wellness Committee meeting. Matt, can you think anything off the top of your head that was critical to their mentioning?
I can't. I'm drawing a blank. It was, yeah, it was. I think, you know, we just did a bunch of different updates. We talked about how the budget connected to the wellness initiatives.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's stuff that we talked about before. It's pretty simple to say. But one thing I did want to mention is that we are starting to communicate elements of the wellness policy to families in the community. So they'll see that coming home in paper form and also on social media and on the superintendent blog. And we're hoping that it will make people more aware that the policy exists, what it's meant to do and how it works. And then the last meeting of the year is happening on Wednesday, June fifth, at four PM here at the high school. So I hope people will come, childcare as always. So, yeah. And I wanted to also congratulate you guys. I'm so excited for you and I'm so happy that you've come on this journey. This is my first year on the board. And I'm really excited to see everybody's moving up and moving on. That's great. And I've mentioned it before, but it bears repeating. I'm also really thrilled about the budget, so yay.
All right. Kristin?
Just to share our congratulations for no and any and you guys were, have stuck through us through a lot of, you know, growing pains. We really appreciate you being willing to do that and then still encourage other people to participate. And I know that whatever you guys are going to, whatever you do, you're going to bring this, getting grace and hard work you've bought here. So we're so lucky. I don't really have too much to update. One thing that we're looking at is the Sustainability Committee is kind of moving in a direction where it was an interesting model this year because I almost would describe it, it was more of an advisory committee and became a bit of a sort of task force led by Matt and staff, as well as, you know, community members and me representing the board. And I think what we've started to realize is that there were elements of it that can really be woven into the work that's going on in the district. So parts, I don't know if we're going to stick with an actual committee structure going forward. It was really useful to look at the issue and see how it could fit. And now I think it will kind of weave into curriculum and facilities and then, and maybe wellness. There's definitely a lot of overlap with wellness. So we can put some new items on that agenda. And then maybe we'll meet in more of a tracking sense to kind of see how it's all going and aggregate the data from those different. But I think it's an interesting model going forward because if we identify an issue that we're interested in looking at, it's a great way to sort of bring some minds together and then figure out a way to sort of, if it's kind of identified as being something we want to, we want to prioritize, then to sort of weave it in and then let the administrators figure out how it will work. And so I'll let you know hopefully where we end up and when we have a better understanding of it. But we don't have a next committee planned. We're going to talk about it with, I'm going to bring some stuff to you guys. Facilities, there's probably going to be a presentation. And that's pretty much all I have.
All right. Anthony?
Good evening. Congratulations, no and any. And thank you for the accolades for going to the AP class. You could also thank Grace Sanker, who gave my name to Mr. Levy on that. I was supposed to come in a lot earlier than the government shutdown and all of those stuff happened. So I, you know, it actually ended up working out because I ended up coming at the end. I thought maybe you guys would be pooped from AP tests. And like, whoa, this guy's a little tough now. So I'm glad you guys liked it. And any, I'm glad you stumped me because now you're making me look up the answer. You know, I'm not one to pretend to know everything. And I like it when people get me thinking. So thank you very much for that as well.
Any, can you do a reenactment of that? Just kidding.
It's a very small club I get in. So we had a diversity committee meeting on May sixth. And three representatives from three schools were there to talk about their activities. Jevy Foster was there to talk about the equity team, establishing Safe Space and Be Bold. The high school, somebody from the high school was there to talk about the book feed and the challenge of, the project of why teenagers should put their phone down. And then roundabout, there were three different classes that were described. And there was a lot of actually discussion on that. And I guess it's, there's going to be after discussion on that about how much of that should we discuss? So the, then we talked about the code of conduct, about the training moving forward on restorative practices, the dismat recommendation on restorative practices, not criminalizing students. And also seeking advice on revisions through two sets of students in the high school, two sets in the middle school, parents and teachers. And then recommendations. The feedback they're getting from those groups are consistent with the comments that we've gotten from NYCLU. So that's good. And then, you know, we're looking forward to hearing more about the level of infractions and how Level One looks like when it includes the many support options. We don't have another diversity committee meetings set yet. We will rule the members and figure out what that's going to happen. I did want to ask about, you know, we did approve the dates for the board meeting. I guess at some point, which, I don't know which agenda, we're going to talk about the time, the start time for them. But I guess, you know, seven PM works for me. I don't know if there has to be a motion on an agenda in the future or what.
I'll place it on there. I was waiting until after the budget vote to place it on.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, I was playing around with all those and I saw the three positions open up. And I guess when the position closes, it disappears. So if anybody's interested, they should, I guess, be looking at it constantly. I don't think there's a notification feature on that system. But I'm not familiar with the system myself, so. I just was curious myself because I wanted to see how easy it is to, if you had an interest in the school district. Because once in a while, we get questions like that, and I refer them all else. How easy is it to actually access it? So I'm right there now. You have the one business teacher and the half, the halftime art teacher advertised there. And there's a whole instruction, instructional position there. So I think it ends in this week, the application. And that's all for my report.
Mike?
So congratulations, no and any, and all the graduates, graduates from here from Beacon and all the other high schools. Interesting, my daughter Addie is graduating next Wednesday from Postcard Academy. So she, so within four years goes by very quickly. And Beacon had prepared her very well in all aspects, academic as well as athletic and being just in, you know, very diverse groups and able to work in any situation. So it's really good to see her grow. So and then she'll be, she's already shipped her Jeep to Hawaii, where she'll be her first station. So it'll be there when she gets there in June. So it's an exciting time of year for everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Facilities committee meeting is going to be this Wednesday at seven PM. We will be interested to hear if, when construction will start. Certainly depending on the rain and being able to just get any kind of machine onto that ground. That'll be good to talk about. The other thing we're talking about is the status of the HVAC systems in all of our buildings. I know in the, in the high school, there's a lot of extensive, you know, research and understanding of what had gone on and what changes can be made, primarily with the control systems, in order to set them up, in order to avoid what's, you know, what happened last year. So I'll be looking at, for that update on the status of the plan from Anthony DiMauro. We're also been talking about the security portion of the next capital plan. And it's, you know, we're looking at using the technology grant for the technology aspects of security improvements around all our buildings. So we've been hearing some proposals on all those plans to come up with that plan. So there's still a lot, a lot going on. I am happy to hear with the budget. Very exciting to see the advanced, different offerings and especially business, computer science, and arts and the student's program. It's really important things, so. We've come a long way and it's an exciting place to be. So I appreciate it. That's the end of your report.
Thank you. Melissa?
I wanted to congratulate no and any as well. And thank you for your efforts in canvassing people to come and lead. I know from experience, it's not easy to find volunteers to be leaders. So thank you for your efforts. I'm also excited about the budget and can't wait to see what's next for Beacon. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
James?
Well, I'm going to say congratulations as well. Not just for graduating, for your accomplishments, for coming here as regularly as you do, sitting through these meetings. It's hard work and we value it. It's so important. It's so great that you're here. I want to extend congratulations to all of the graduates as well. I mean, certainly our valedictorians, fantastic. But even for students who just get a degree, it's still such a huge accomplishment. It's something to feel so proud of. And we're in the home stretch now. We're almost there. Last month, it was three weeks ago, we had a safety committee meeting. So these happen less frequently. I just want to say that I'm so impressed with the committee as a whole. We have members from the law enforcement community, from fire department, from our school's state security staff, Mark Thomas as well. And I just want to say that I'm consistently so impressed with both how on top of they are of the organization and making sure our students are safe. But really, something that I think about a lot is continuing the culture of care, thinking about how do we keep our students feeling safe while also being able to stay focused on going to school. And I'm so consistently impressed with that being a really guiding spirit in that room. So thank Matt and Mark Thomas for that leadership. We had a policy committee meeting last week. We reviewed a few policies, one of which is up for review today. They had the use of timeout rooms. Some questions about that to talk later. And we also have a diversity committee meeting. And I just wanted to say on that, that I'm also very impressed with the work that all our administrators are doing, certainly under Matt's leadership. Correcting inequity, challenging inequity in our schools and our school systems is so important and it's so difficult and it's so brave for our administrators to be taking that on the way they do. It should be expected that there will be some tough conversations along the way. And that doesn't in any way detract from the work we're doing, the progress we're making. It's fantastic. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Aaron?
Well, I have to say, but I do mean it from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations, you guys. Really exciting. And also to our valedictorians, salutatorians, really exciting. And everyone graduating. Now that I have a ninth grader, I can see that end. And it's, yeah, it's coming faster than I expected. But great work and also the budget. It's so fun to talk about this budget, which I have a feeling will not always be the case. But there's just so much exciting stuff happening at every level. So I feel really great about that. Thank you for all the hard work that's gone into it. Eric, can we have a curriculum committee meeting on Wednesday? Do we have a curriculum committee on Wednesday? That's all.
All right. The only comment I have is I received a letter today that Dia is going to be doing a 2019 exhibit for Educated Preview on Saturday, June eighth, 2019, from eleven to twelve. And they've invited the board members to go. So if you want to go, just let. Kelly, no. No, you don't have to RSVP. You can just show up. It's June eighth, eleven AM to twelve PM at Dia.
There's also a, or, June sixth.
That's a, an educated preview.
Yeah, but it's the same work, I think.
Yes.
If you can't get it Saturday.
So if you could do Thursday the sixth, from four to six, or Saturday, June eighth, from eleven to twelve?
But Saturday's open to public.
Saturday's open to public.
And just, uh, with all the different things happening at the end of the year, uh, we were, I'll get moving on this this week. We're just gonna send calendar invites to the board. You know, obviously you don't have to go to them all, but the, all the award ceremonies and various things start kinda stacking up and we just wanted to make sure you all had access to when they were, so we'll get those up this week.
Mike, I appreciate it, yeah. Y'all from roundabout, honor side, it'd be nice to have it all.
Yeah.
All right, the consent agenda. Do you say the consent agenda for Minister of Education make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters, which are included? Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there anything on the consent agenda any board member would like to pull?
I'd like to pull eleven point oh nine and eleven point ten. Hearing no other, uh, items from the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve eleven point oh one through eleven point oh eight. We, uh, pulled eleven point oh nine, eleven point oh ten for a separate vote. Is that you, Ann? James? Comments or questions? I would just like to say thanks for eleven point oh eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine oh. I need a motion?
Motion approved eleven point oh nine, approving memorandum of agreement with BTA.
Comments or questions?
So really, I guess, looking for kinda the, the background for this memorandum and, and, you know, why we're entering into it and, and, you know, what are the reasons?
We, um, it's essentially already been our practice for the most part. And we wanted to, uh, we wanted to memorialize it, um, with BTA through this MOA. Uh, so we did a few things to kinda prep for this. We obviously worked with our attorneys on this, but we looked at, uh, what our neighboring districts were doing and they all, to a district, had something like this in place. Uh, we wanted to put something like this in place, cause sometimes these folks, th- this is a way that we sometimes recruit teachers to the district and we wanted, uh, to have something that put a little bit more value in writing to them coming in and doing this work. Uh, so, uh, that's kind of the background. It, it started coming up in conversation, uh, with Mr. Burns earlier in the year and we've kind of been working on it a little bit. I mean, there hasn't been a lot of back and forth that we spent a little time putting it together. And, and again, it's basically what we've already been doing for the most part. I think we've had a little bit of inconsistency in implementation. That was also one of the reasons for getting it into an MOA, so we would be consistent in putting it forward, so, um, that's the background from our end.
And yeah, not being in education, I just don't understand the, the benefit, cause if they're a long-term sub, right? Is that a long-term sub, what this is saying is that, what, they're not being, they're not being hired, but I mean, does their, does, the tenure doesn't start?
No, the, the, the benefit is essentially at the, at that point, uh, they become, they do become the official teachers of the class. They take over the planning, they take over the grading, they take over every aspect of the class. And so, it's essentially a way to, uh, I don't know the right word.
They become the teacher of record?
Yes.
Yes.
For the assignment, whereas if they're a sub, the teacher that's out is still the teacher of record?
Yes.
Is still responsible for the grades?
Yes.
So, so is it like a resume builder for them or something?
Well, it's, I mean, it could be seen as resume builder, but it's also a way for us to, uh, to take people who are kind of coming into, I don't wanna say tricky situations, but, um, you know, replacing a teacher who's out on leave can sometimes be a challenging task and it's a way to value what they're doing, essentially. And quite honestly, to put us on par with other districts in the area, because essentially, all of our neighbors slash competitors have something like this already in place.
Does, so does their time of service, would, would it then start here as opposed to if we hired a person? I'm really just trying to understand.
I could, I'll speak about the district I work in. I can't speak specifically of the Beacon, but like, I know in our district with the APPR, that if a teacher's not the teacher of record for sixty percent of the time, that they're of the year. So the year is from September, it's a start date to June, right? And if they're not working or the teacher of record for sixty percent of the year, then they don't get an APPR, APPR.
Mike, are you wondering like about how it affects tenure?
I'm just trying to understand what it, what it really means.
Celia, what, if someone comes in and does like this for a half year and then we end up hiring them for a probationary, does it shorten their tenure period or do they still have like a four-year? Yep.
Um, so s- to answer the question about leave replacement, how it may impact, uh, future employment and probationary status. Um, under the, uh, education laws of thirty twelve D, which are our current, uh, annual professional performance review laws, there's only a very limited condition in which, uh, prior service can impact, um, shortening a tenure, uh, a tenure probation of the required four-year period. We have that situation, uh, in the district. What's required is that they are serving in the same assignment in the area of their certification and what would be their future employ, uh, probationary employment, uh, tenure area. And that they've done that for two consecutive years and that they have evaluations throughout those, uh, assignment years. So it's, it's very tight and limited. So if someone were to serve a half year as a leave replacement teacher, i- and we were to employ them, uh, and say in a, in a, in a consecutive year or in another future year when we had a position available, uh, we wouldn't be able to shorten their four-year probation to three and a half years. Um, but what it does do for teachers who are looking ultimately to become a career educator and, uh, to have opportunity to take substitute positions, that though as a, as a leave replacement teacher and a teacher of record, it allows them to accrue that time, uh, in terms of employment, uh, resume building skills. Uh, hopefully, perhaps for us or in another, in another employment situation. It also is important from the perspective of having their prior service records for their certification, uh, requirements. And so, you know, there's, there's twofold with that. That's a, a benefit. It just allows us to recruit for some of these positions that are long-term subs or potentially leave replacements, perhaps a higher, uh, candidate pool.
And this isn't completely related, but there is something in the BTA, or a halftime teacher, correct me if I'm wrong. A halftime teacher is not a member of BTA, like a point five, a point four. This, this doesn't impact that at all. That's, those are two separate things.
Right.
Right. So this is just about people doing long-term leave replacements.
Right, they're additionally, they're basically doing additional work. So they're becoming a teacher of record, they have to do the planning, rather than sub just kinda walks into the classroom.
Is there anything in the BTA contract that says after a certain amount of time, timeout, that they're no longer the teacher of record? Like, do you know what I'm asking? Like if they're, say, a teacher was going out maternity and they were gonna, and it was January and they get, we're gonna take the rest of the year, like the eight weeks and then the FMLA for that. And there was a sub in place, is there, does the BTA contract stipulate like a term as to how long that teacher would?
This, I mean, this essentially does because it says this person's taking over after?
Seventh, third, or sixth.
Yeah, down to the seventh week.
Contract on the way.
After six.
So until that seventh week, that teacher that's out is still responsible for putting in grades and?
And doing lesson plans.
Planning, planning, et cetera.
That's what's been consistent with our practice, um, and that the teacher, while they're using, um, any of their accrued time, are still, uh, involved in creating lesson plans, just becomes fuzzy into the, the time period. Again, that's the, this is to make consistent our practice, um, in terms of what happens in that period where, uh, leave, it goes for a full twelve weeks or maybe extended for, uh, on a semester basis. And that's what our contract stipulates is a semester by semester.
I read it as a clarification of rules for both the person on leave and the person in the classroom. That's what I thought it was, just a clause to kind of make that, make everyone's role and responsibility more clear in terms of accountability. So I, I don't have any problem with, with, I don't know.
Is there, yeah, one more clarifying question. So it says that, um, they, they'll be a member of the association to be placed on step point either BA or MA step schedule. So does that, is, what's the difference in that pay schedule versus what the leave, you know, what is, I guess, the substitute pay that we're paying is?
Whatever.
Do it right now.
You know what I mean? Am I asking you correctly?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're asking.
The difference between the per diem rate and the step point.
Well, the per diem rate is what?
It's a hundred, a hundred and fifty. Hundred fifty dollars a day for, uh, past twenty consecutive days of assignment and the differential, um, depending on if they have a BA or a master's, um, is a couple hundred dollars more per day of a rate.
Couple hundred dollars more a day?
It's about, it's one thirty, one thirty-five for masters. It'll be less for BA. Additional. Additional. They get a hundred and fifty dollars a day. If you go on MA step one roughly, um, they, they make about two eighty-five. So it's a difference of a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day.
So it's, so it's a significant increase for the, the teacher that's, that's?
That's taking over the class?
Taking over the class.
Right, but they're, in, in essence, then they're doing the lesson planning and they're doing the grading and they're, they have the full responsibility of the classroom. They're being paid as a professional instead of a sub.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine oh. Need a motion for eleven point one oh?
Motion.
Comments or questions?
Question, I was just looking for, for background on this particular policy. I mean, I, I've checked our current policies and don't, don't see it. And I, you know, I see it in the, in the list of, of policies, but it's just, I'm just looking forward to see why, the background behind this and why it's selected to be pulled in now.
Uh, it's a, it's a policy, this is a, this is a NISBA policy for the most part. And, uh, it's a policy that needs to be in place. Um, we do, sort of as a matter of last resort, but we do sometimes have to use physical restraint on a student. And so, you know, it's important that we have this policy in place. Now, there's a few things in this policy, you know, we're using essentially, I mean, we did some changes to it, but we're using essentially the NISBA, um, you know, template for this. And they, so they mentioned a couple of things that we don't really, we don't do in the district. One is a timeout room.
Right.
Um, and by that kind of timeout room, it's not like a, you know, in-school suspension or reflection room. This is a, you know, timeout room that's used for, you know, behavioral, like, like very specific behavioral interventions. Those are typically used, uh, in, in, you know, more therapeutic kind of settings, schools or therapeutic programs. So we're not equipped to have that. I, I think the, you know, the NISBA wants it in there just in case somewhere in the future we ever did have like a more therapeutic kind of program and we needed to have it. But we don't use timeout rooms and we don't use, uh, aversive behavioral interventions. And so, so those are parts, it, it's a little confusing, cause it's like, we have this policy where two of the things we don't currently do, but it's something NISBA recommends that we just have on the books. And Mike, you know, you asked one of the questions in the emails, do we have a human rights committee? We don't have one. My understanding is if we started using aversive behavioral interventions, then we would be required to begin one of these committees. Celia, Mike, you, you wanna add? Yeah.
So, uh, the importance of this policy is the part that prohibits the use of aversive therapy, uh, or aversive intervention. That was important from a state policy perspective several years ago. Uh, and there was an interim, uh, kind of policy guidance, uh, because across the state, there may have been students that had IEPs that may have had, may have had as a part of that, um, you know, a, a use of some form of, of, of aversive intervention, whether it was, um, you know, visual stimulation, auditory, uh, or other sensory. Um, it's very clear, our students have never had this, but it's important from a policy's perspective that we're clear that we prohibit the use of aversive, because that's what's aligned with state law. So that part is what's important. Where those are used are in settings and where like a human rights commission would be necessary is where we're talking about highly intensive, high levels of care, typically residential settings, and New York State actually prohibits them.
So, I mean, I would just, sh- should we be saying, should we be stating that we don't, we don't use these? You know, sh- I mean, should we be stating that in our policy? It's, or do we, or is it meant to leave it open in case you had to use it? It would just seem odd that we're having the policy here when that?
Yeah, I didn't, right.
I think this came up because we had some staff members trained with a, a handle with care.
Yeah.
Physical restraint, um, aspects, and they're doing training for social workers, I believe, and psychologists. And we didn't have a physical restraint policy. So when we did, James, correct, I believe this, is that how it came up, I think?
Well, that was part of it, cause we did discuss, we discussed this previously another time. Uh, and my memory, maybe Celia can correct me, was that we felt it was necessary to have a definition of a timeout room on the books.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, specifically to, to avoid the, not that it would happen in our district, but the, the possibility of teachers improvising a timeout room. So that there's, there's clear definitions of, of what it should be. The, um, location, size, and access to the room will be in accordance with the laws. Am I, am I right about that? That was an initial concern.
That, that was one part of it, but I think Anthony, the importance of it and where it came into policy, like I think several, several months ago, almost, I think, last year at this time, um, was with the anticipation of, um, having a director of security, having, uh, a district, uh, time devoted to using handle with care as an emergency intervention, was, it was important to have a policy that kind of stipulates when we need emergency intervention. When is it, when might it be necessary that staff need to intervene to keep kids, uh, safe? And/or to stipulate what it's not and that it's not part of a behavior intervention program stipulated on a student's IEP for us.
I wanted, I wanted to add for Mike's benefit is, is that from what I understand, forty-three, forty-three twenty-one point one two replaces our old seventy-six nineteen, which is the use of timeout rooms. So, I mean, there is an older, yeah, there is an, there is an older policy that we do have in our old policy. And, you know, I, we need, we need to upgrade them. And we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we're upgrading them in a, in an intelligent way and not just rubber stamping all of them.
Right, right. I didn't, I didn't, I looked through and I didn't see anything but seventy-six nineteen. I'll take, I'll take a look at that.
See, it's in the old PF.
Okay. So then, um, my next question is, under the aversive, aversive behavior intervention, it re- refers to the twenty, two thousand eight, two thousand nine school year? And I was just, um, I was a child-specific exception, was granted by the Commissioner of Education. Is that, is that correct, correctly written as two thousand eight, two thousand nine?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was maybe a two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
That's when the state got involved, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's when New York State went, uh, in a lawsuit of, or, um, an out-of-state provider.
All right, so those are, those are the correct years, is really what I was making sure.
Yep.
And then, and then lastly, with training, cause training's very important, it, you know, like this one, will be provided annually or as needed? Does that mean it's annually, at least annually, and then in between as needed? Or annually or as you determine you need? You know, you know the difference?
That's a great question. I mean, we.
I mean, it's the first reading, which is why I'm really, I'm like, delving into it a little bit.
I'm just sitting here, I'm actually just thinking. I mean, I think we could, I'm sort of talking to the policy people, we could just say annually. But, you know, we're not, so we're not providing.
Which might not be needed.
We're not providing training to every single person in the district, so each building has a team of people that we've done the training for, um.
I think that also could create a compliance issue, because if you say you're gonna do it annually, then a lot of people.
I think that programs out there, say, if you use T, handle with care, which the district has, or TCI or TIC, any of them make it, if you're a trainer and you're gonna be a train, trainer, you have to go annually to keep up your certification. You have to go annually to them. But like, the as needed may be that you have a social worker that's reassigned to a, um, a more needy, uh, population and then they may be trained as needed.
Or like a teaching assistant without?
Or like a teaching assistant, if that makes sense.
But, but a person in the building who sort of year in, year out needs this, they need to be retrained, like they need a refresher training every year as well, so that's...
So is there the word, what if that wording is appropriate, or if maybe it's something to make it more clear?
Yeah.
So we don't get misinterpreted?
Yeah.
Misinterpreted? Catch.
Would we take out 40 times, Daniel, would that be?
Well, then you're training annually, so.
And then we'd have to show a track record of actually doing that.
Sometimes as needed is?
Maybe that's a question with Mark. Is Mark doing the training for that?
Mark and Joe, Mark and Joe Gallo.
And is the plan, do you know if the plans from the currently be annually training, the other?
They've trained trainers, they have to.
Yes, I mean, they are, they are, they have to get, just like Anthony said, they get recertified every year, but they are, you know, the teams in each building that have this, they're getting retrained every year. It's not a full-day training once you've been through. I think it's like a two-hour refresher. I mean, just, just to put it out there, all of our security staff have been trained in this model, and then each building has a team of people. Anthony mentioned social workers, special educators, some general educators, and some of our paraprofessionals. So every building probably has a team of about 10 people that have been trained. And I'll give, you know, big credit to Joe Galbo and Mark Thomas for kind of getting this off the ground a couple of summers ago. And they really saw a need when I was coming in to the district, so it's been a huge effort. Every single PD, PD day that we have, somebody's getting trained in handle with care.
So should we say annually for certified, for certified staff, and then as needed for?
But I don't think uncertified staff should be?
You're, I think you're talking about different certifications.
I'm talking about the people who are certified trainers. So annually for, as required, or so as required for certification, and then as needed for?
I would honestly run it past our insurance company.
Yeah, that's probably the smartest thing to do.
Yeah, you can take it back and consider.
It's a matter of legality, is at that point, and it might be good to count.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. So we should have.
I don't know what's the right answer for that, because one insurance company could say one thing.
I mean, annual or as needed, I don't understand the problem with that, to be honest.
Well, it could be invited annually, like every year, or as needed, so, or is like, we're gonna do it every year, or we're gonna do it whenever we need it.
I think it's also, our policy gets used, our policy is used as, we'll have to provide documentation if someone has a problem with how it's been applied, and if we, if it's in any way unclear, that could affect us. Like, they interpret it one way, we interpret it a different way. Probably the best way is to deal with the way the insurance company would interpret it.
We either want to be boxed into a schedule, or we want to be open to interpretation. This seems open, this seems kind of a middle ground to me.
I would want whatever would get covered by insurance.
I don't want to miss, oh, you're violation, and you didn't train annually.
Right.
Well, we did as needed, but you should, you needed to do it annually.
So maybe we can, because it is the first read, maybe we can have Emory bring it to our attorney and/or the insurance company to see.
Well, I mean, you know, Jim, Johan, one of our attorneys, has a lot of experience with this, and so I'll go to him tomorrow. And if it's just tweaking that one line, I think we could possibly just bring it back to the full board? Okay, we'll run it past you, James, and then Jim usually knows his way around this pretty well, so we'll go to him first.
So do we want to amend the first read, didn't say as amended from, as advice from our attorney? Or as amended with advice from attorney, or do we want to?
We just table it?
I think we'd be able to bring it for a second read if they're just.
There's a motion already to approve it, so we gotta amend the initial motion.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I think, because this policy has been kicking around for a long time.
That's why I'm like, I wanted to do the first read, and so if we said as amended, like we could do the first read, and then we could put it on the second read with amended.
So make a motion that we accept the first read of this policy pending legal review.
Second, or do I have to second that, or are you just?
Second amendment, yeah.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pos, motion carried. So now I need the motion to approve 11.0. We made the first and the second, and it's amended to have our attorney, so now we're doing it with as amended. So 11.10 as amended.
Second, move.
First, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pos, motion carried. So we approved, approved the amendment, and then we approved the policy as amended. Okay. Need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual. The board is not expected to take action after executive session.
So move.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pos, motion carried, nine oh.